Well, good morning. We'll get our Board of Commissioners policy meeting started here. And we'll do the introductions. Pat Malone, Commissioner.
Joe Kirby, County Administrator.
Vance Cramming, County Council.
Lilia Neville, Board of Commissioners's Office.
Zan Bell, I'm Neil, Commissioner. There was your open transition. Mary Parsons, my name. Marriott Danielle Brown Health Department.
Greg Riddler, Sheriff's Office.
Our Department of Health Department.
Greg Verret, Community Development.
Dave Busby, EOC Director.
Brian Lee, Emergency Commissioner.
It looks like we have a couple of guests. Ayed, good morning. And Sammy.
Good morning.
I guess I need to ask, are there any other members of the public joining us this morning? Hearing none, I think I will turn it over to Joe just to make sure our agenda is up to date.
Great, thank you. Good morning, everyone. I think there's been so many emails going around regarding topics for today. I just wanted to review the topic and the order in which that topic will be addressed this morning in order to give you all an idea of where you're going to speak. So first, we're going to start out with Danielle and Charlie. They're going to give the Health Department update. Then we're going to go to Brian Lee for the EOC update. Then we're going to go to the policy issue that Charlie is bringing forward today regarding long-term care facility testing. Then we're going to go to the topic about vehicle camping at churches. And we've got a number of folks on the phone today that will address that. Then after that, we'll go to the Benton County, I'm sorry, the Benton Community Financial Assistance draft that's been forwarded to the Board regarding the county helping with nonprofits financially. And then we will end the conversation with the EOC financials. And we have folks from the finance area as well as EOC to address that. So those are the order we're going to go in, Commissioners. So with that, Danielle and Charlie, you're up.
Do you want to start, Danielle?
Go ahead, Charlie. I'll let you take the lead.
Okay. So the ongoing preparations and contingency planning, mass fatality, alternative care center are virtually done. Again, those are plans that we can stand up again at any point if they're needed. Final touch of people on the, there's still a lot of work, of course, being done in the vulnerable populations, various portions of that. Unless Sarah give an update on the status of some of that planning, and then there'll be more detail about that later. The Pump Tough investigation piece, testing is very active and ongoing, and we are really getting the stride now pretty much where we would hope to have been a couple of months ago. Clinical testing is opening up. Essentially, this week, they're starting to test anyone who is symptomatic at all. And there are categories of asymptomatic, people either providing care, they're in close contact with someone who's symptomatic, there's a few other criteria. Essential workers, people like that, who may be able to be tested depending on the provider, depending on the circumstances. There's also the OSU Trace Community Random Testing Program did a small-scale pilot last week, group of concepts. They are going to about half-scale this coming weekend, so roughly about 500 tests will be done, again, through door knocking within the city limits of Corvallis between Saturday and Monday or Tuesday. And hopefully by next week, they'll have all their teams set up and be doing well over 900 tests a week after that. A new testing laboratory that we've been working on is up to full scale now and operating really well. Staffing for all this to take and investigate a whole test. Previously, we've reduced staffing from two to six with internal reassignment, starting next week, we're increasing that to 10. And then we'll monitor that and see how much more testing is being done, how many more positives coming, how much more contact investigation needs to be done. We're looking at planings for sustaining that, of course, year-round. We won't be able to, you know, some of these people will have to go back to their normal jobs at some point. And so that would be some long-term conversations, and that's going on statewide. There's also a lot of regional collaboration discussions going on around communicable disease investigation and capacity and contact investigation between our three counties and statewide, so more on that soon. Sarah, you want to jump in?
Sure. Thanks, Charlie. I'll just add to your update a little bit. We also have a team of folks working on a mass sheltering plan in case there is an additional disaster that happens while we're responding to the pandemic. I think the first draft is planned to be done by the end of the day-to-day, so we're really close on that. I think most of you know that Brian submitted the FEMA request for reimbursement letter for non-congregate, congregant sheltering for individuals experiencing homelessness this week. So we asked for reimbursement consideration for five hotel rooms to place individuals who are COVID-positive or symptomatic and awaiting testing. And 10 additional hotel rooms for individuals who meet the criteria of underlying health conditions or age that would put them at risk for severe COVID-19 illness if infected for isolation purposes. We also requested 13 full hookup spaces, reimbursement for that, for RVs at the fairgrounds, and an additional 30 vehicle camping spaces for the fairgrounds so that we could utilize our county asset in that way to have people be able to shelter in place during this pandemic. So we should hear back on a hearing, you know, in a week as to whether that request will be approved. We have chance recovery in our community who have funding through community services consortiums already placing individuals who are medically fragile into hotel rooms in all three counties. And so, you know, we have, at this point, four individuals placed in within Benton County. There was a little confusion on a call yesterday, but we confirmed that there are individuals in Benton County hotel rooms here. So we're really partnering closely with our community partners to roll that out and get people where they need to be. In addition, Garcia Munoz has been leading the vulnerable population support group that, you know, has been working really closely with the JEC on providing communication for non-English speakers, reaching out to farmers and farm workers, and then also working really closely with our food security providers to connect up and problem-solve and make sure folks are getting the resources that they need.
The only thing, this is Danielle, the only thing I would add to that is the Behavioral Health Response Plan has been pretty much fully developed. Our teams did a good job, Ashley Telamonte had a very good job of developing that. She is adding a little bit of support around suicide prevention and postvention. That was not previously added to that plan, so that will be updated to include that. She has reached out to Lilia and Kelly Losi at the JEC to do some marketing and outgoing communication about implementation for that program as well.
Danielle, would it be possible to forward a little bit more about the contents of that plan? See that plan?
Sure. Yeah, I'm absolutely happy to forward that to you guys. It still isn't a final draft because we are adding the suicide prevention and postvention, but I can definitely forward what we do have completed to you guys. I can do that as soon as I can get to my email. That's not a problem. Thank you.
May I provide one more update?
Oh, please.
I think I just wanted to, you know, add so that folks know that our harm reduction staffs have been following OHA guidelines to increase the distribution of naloxone, the drug that reverses opioid overdose, because drug supplies, drug supply chains have been disrupted. Folks are having less access to recovery services, and so they've done a really good job of increasing the distribution of naloxone. We've let law enforcement, EMS, and our emergency room partners know that they're recurring, just as a heads up. But within, you know, the last three weeks, they've gotten reports of three overdose reimbursement based on the naloxone that they've been recommending. Thank you.
The only other thing I'd add is that the environmental health team continues to do some surveillance and periodic checking, spot checking, food safety and compliance with the governor's orders, and all is going very well. We really have no problems there, but monitoring is ongoing.
I guess, Charlie, I had a question for you on the trace testing. Is that kind of community-wide results versus individual, getting results back to the individual?
That's a great question, Commissioner. So it's actually both. So all testing will say, any COVID test and any communicable disease testing is mandated to be reported to the local health department, both positive and negative COVID tests are recorded individually, and we have to have individual demographics and identifiable information to be able to get a hold of those people. But on the OSU side, all of the data they put up, and they will be putting up their results on the Trace website in as close to real time as they can when they get their results and do their analytics, all of that will be de-identified. So that will be community-wide. And just because from a public health side, we will do contact tracing of the positive that come up with, handle those just like any other test for a medical model.
Great, thank you. I was a little unclear on what the goal was there.
Yeah, so that's, you know, it's community-wide prevalent, you know, percentage research just to monitor ongoing incidence and spread of illness through the community on a de-identified community-wide basis. That's their model, but because they're doing human testing, they have to adhere with Oregon statute of rule of reporting to the laboratory, and those come to public health. But as always, all of those results are completely confidential within the public health system and the medical system.
Okay, thank you. Zan?
I would say that this information will be incredibly useful for any kind of revised modeling and determining just how wide the spread of viruses in the community and transmission rates might be.
Yeah, exactly. That's really the intent. And again, and it's what's unique about this and being done in very, very few other places to do longitude, no monitoring, how this changes potentially some early notice of subsequent waves, what the patterns of transmission are. I know OSU is working with some funders. They are hoping to expand this project to other communities in Oregon with different ethnicities, different ethnicities. They look at the story, they're very old at that, but they're playing the fundraising and the deep game, looking at that part. And again, just like this last week, we're taking a group of funds, we're ramping up here locally, doing it in Corvallis for a few, you know, the Iowa because of concept for potential funders to do this, then other communities around the city.
Great. And it's nice to know that the original schedule, it sounds like we're on track. I heard something about in Eugene, UVO has partnered with Private Outfit, but I think we're ahead of them, so. Anything else for the Health Department folks?
Nothing from me right now. We'll be back later again, I think.
Very soon, it looks like. Thank you. Next up, EOC update is Brian Lee with us.
Yes, I'm on the line.
All right, take it away.
So all I really have right now for the EOC update, we are transitioning a little bit more into the, again, I hate using the word recovery, but just a different model, I should say, of our EOC structure. We're going to focus a lot more on the economic recovery side. We're building a new branch in operations starting next week, focusing on economic recovery. That's going to be obviously focused on business development, loans, needs, as well as some focus on reopening and just supporting the community in that way. We're still going to have voluntary donations management and some of those other branches, but they're going to be under operation now. Other than that, we sort of slimmed our sections down to, I'm going to say, the bare minimum of staffing for what we need, so we're scaled appropriately and not wasting people's time. We did get the three new folks here for orientation today. That seems to be going well. Our process developed by Lori, Matt, and Andy Abbott seems to be working smoothly. So that's all very good and positive, and we're happy to see that. And otherwise, we're just kind of moving forward with a new set of objectives for next week, and we're going to start having a lot more discussions about what our objectives are moving forward. Dave has officially been handed the EOC director role on the city side from Chief McCarthy. That started yesterday afternoon, and it's going to continue for this week, and then all gone on next week, and then Dave will be on the week following. So we'll keep our week-long rotation up, but it'll be Dave Busby and I. And that's all I have to report on current EOC operations.
Okay. Dave Busby, do you have anything to add to the EOC report?
No, I couldn't cover it any better than Brian, so we're good to go.
Any questions for Brian Lee or Dave Busby? Hearing none, we'll take up the policy issue, long-term care facility testing. You're back on, Charlie.
Okay. So obviously concerned about long-term care, congregation-living facilities that house in our homes to some very vulnerable portions of our population, some people with both ages and with significant medical background is a real concern locally, regionally, statewide. In Benton County, as I said before, well, 60% of our fatalities have been associated with long-term care facilities, about a third of our overall cases. There's still some surveillance going on out there, some pending tests on some staff from long-term care facilities, something we're keeping a very close eye on. It's true, our neighboring counties, it's true statewide, it's true nationally, you've undoubtedly seen a lot of that in the media. So we're having really intensive discussions between the health officers in our region, including the infectious disease specialists from Samaritan Health System, as well as other providers in the community, about, you know, the residents, they have medical care, they're monitored very closely, they're not leaving the facility. But the wild card in all this is staff who come in and go out, there's no visitors, but staff are coming in, going out every shift. So there's been a, you know, initially, you know, as what has been the discussion in Lynn County, we've had parallel discussions and are intensively discussing with them with the concept of testing long-term care facility staff, which on the face of it seems very straightforward. But as always, that was in detail, and one of the major details in this is that most of these facilities use agency staffing, and these are statewide and regional agencies. People are assigned from one facility to another, sometimes on a daily basis. So the facilities, most facilities actually employ very few of the staff who work there, especially caregiver staff, most of those come from staffing agencies who may be working in a facility in Benton County for a week or two, and then in Salem, then in Hillsborough, and then Eugene, and then back to Corvallis. Facilities, sometimes, you know, depending on their relationship with a staffing agency, they may not know from week to week who, which staff was going to be at that facility. So it makes it a much larger and more complex issue than just, you know, getting a hold of facilities that we already know and work with and saying, you know, give us your employee list, and we'd like to set up staffing or have them go to their primary care provider, because there's all these other complications. So we're trying to wrap our heads around that. This was put on the agenda with the intention and the hope of being able to come to you with a plan and potentially even projected costs and some concept of what would be reimbursable, what would be insurance-covered, what would be, you know, the total effort behind this. And in the last few days, it's become clear that this is much, much more complex than we imagined. Discussions are intensive, they're literally going on around the clock. I'm not sure when we will actually have a workable plan. It is, you know, it was under discussion, you know, at 7:30 this morning by the health officers and the infectious disease specialists, trying to figure out ways to thread this needle. What we're doing now is working very closely with the facilities to do symptomatic surveillance, making sure that anyone who's symptomatic is excluded, certainly the expansion of the testing criteria statewide to doing minor symptoms for people with the jobs like this who could be eligible for asymptomatic testing. But the complication of having to work with employment agencies that aren't based or located in any of our counties becomes problematic. And so, you know, there's discussions with the state about this. Not prepared to come to you with a plan or even preliminary plan right now, but it's kind of heading up at this point that we are part of it. We are hoping to develop a plan when that, when they will come to you and give the resources, staffing or funding or capacity or whatever we need to find that, we'll let, this will look, it's much rougher than I had hoped it would.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Charlie on this issue?
I'm just very sad to hear that our system of elder care has also shifted to a just-in-time model for people instead of groceries or widgets. And it makes this kind of disease situation so much worse. And it's really not fair to either the elders or the people that care for them either.
Yeah, it's, you know, throughout our systems, I know, you know, not in Oregon, but my sister was recently retired from being a speech pathologist, and when she began her career, she worked for a school district, and as the school districts dropped, even employing those kind of specialists, and she had to work first, see if we balanced from district to district and cut into the, you know, the continent she could provide to those kids that she'd known and worked with families for years throughout the system. So it's been going on for a long time, and it just did not become in our face and problematic until just now.
I guess the good news is you folks are getting to define where the hot spots are and where to concentrate your efforts, so I think that should count as progress, and I look forward to continuing this discussion, Charlie.
Yeah, thank you. It's, you know, we are really maintaining very close surveillance. Just opened up an opportunity to have this discussion at a state-line level, which is leverage we may need in to deal with this, because it may be more associated with some of these other outbreak that are occurring all over the place than in the previously
Thank you. Next up is another policy issue, car camping at churches, emergency ordinance. Looks like Greg Verret is here and Rebecca Taylor, so take it away.
Sure. Good morning, Commissioners and everybody. I'm not sure that I'm supposed to lead this discussion necessarily. I'm new to these policy discussions involving EOC. So I'll let Sarah or anybody else jump in if they need to or prefer to. But nobody doing that, I'll go ahead. So Commissioners, as you know, we've been working, community development staff and health staff have been working jointly on developing a vehicle camping at religious institutions code provision, along with a code provision for transitional housing in various forms. And we were about to begin public engagement on the first of those on the vehicle camping when... when the COVID crisis really hit, and we're just really not able to do public engagement the way we typically would prior to adoption of a, a new code provision. So we put it on hold while we were still working behind the scenes on it as best we could. However, understanding the need for housing and sheltering in various ways throughout the, the community, throughout the county at large, we felt it would be appropriate to bring forward for consideration of potential emergency ordinance that would be in effect for a short or limited time period and would enable vehicle camping to occur at religious institutions. This would be outside of city limits within Benton County. I will let somebody from health speak to the need if you would like to, and then I could go through briefly the, some of the details. We need some specific direction on a couple of points before we move forward with it. And one of those questions is whether the board wants us to move forward with an emergency ordinance on this. Sarah, would you like to add anything about the need for this at this time?
Sure, thanks, Greg. So as Greg mentioned, we were already looking at the potential code change prior to COVID-19 pandemic. The need hasn't reduced, if anything has increased. And knowing that, you know, we're asking folks to shelter in place and follow, follow recommended CDC protection measures, it makes sense for us to move forward with putting an emergency ordinance in place with, you know, to meet the immediate need and then to give us a little bit of time to do some outreach so that we can potentially put something permanent in place. So this is, this is really, you know, meeting kind of the existing needs prior to this pandemic, the current need for sheltering in place, and the projected increase in individuals experiencing homelessness and through economic recovery. I don't know, Charlie or Danielle, would you like to add anything to that?
Yeah, thanks, Sarah, this is Danielle. So in our conversations that we were having over the last some number of weeks around the vulnerable population and homeless, we really started to identify some specific needs, and that the car camping was a specific need that we didn't think the hotel motel sheltering would address. We also have been learning that there are people, you know, the idea of trying to park it at different locations throughout the county and are getting posted or getting asked to be, to be removed from law by law enforcement. So we felt like this might be an opportune time to really do some, an emergency code change to allow for that shelter in place to happen during the COVID emergency. What we're hoping for is just to do a temporary code change that once the COVID emergency is passed, it can do the appropriate community, integrate other community feedback that Greg spoke to earlier so we can get an official code change in that's the direction we just like to head. But we just really feel like there is a need right now that needs to be addressed to allow these folks that are in need to car camp to be able to do so without worrying about being posted or being asked to be moving in the middle of the night.
Danielle, Joe Kirby, I just want to interject. We need everybody to put their microphones on mute because we're getting a lot of feedback. So if somebody is not on mute, please go on mute. Thank you. Okay, Danielle, sorry to interrupt, we just could hardly hear you.
Oh, no, that's okay, thanks for, thanks for doing that. I thought it was maybe coming from me, so I'm glad. I was trying to sit real still as I was talking. Anyway, yeah, we're, we're just hoping to be able to have an incremental change to allow folks to car camp during the COVID emergency that would create some stability for individuals who have no, have no stability, but, you know, really do need that place, that safe space to shelter in place.
Thanks, Danielle.
Greg? Can you hear me, Greg?
Yeah.
So, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I just want to clarify, so there's not a misunderstanding about the emergency ordinance. Danielle sort of alluded to an emergency ordinance lasting the duration of COVID-19, our emergency declaration. And just so the commissioners are aware, implementation of an emergency ordinance is dictated by our charter. It can only last 60 days. So if our emergency declaration lasts 75 days, the ordinance will not track the length of that declaration. So just be aware that our charter really prescribes how long the emergency ordinance may last. Second, I think that the idea being put forward today is to have a companion identical ordinance that would outlast the emergency ordinance. Annabelle, you probably remember this from Measure 49, when the voters enacted Measure 49, and we needed to put in place a very quick and dirty ordinance that would allow us to process those claims. What we did at that time was enact an emergency ordinance that described the process for handling those claims. At the same time, we created an, an intermediate ordinance that would take effect the moment the emergency ordinance expired. That lasted for, I want to say, two years, maybe a year. But the point, I think, is Greg is putting forward the idea of the companion ordinances that would allow vehicle camping to continue beyond the date which the emergency ordinance would expire. One of the questions I think you'll have to answer is how long you would like the intermediate order to last? Because I believe the idea is emergency ordinance for 60 days, intermediate order ordinance for a period of time after that that would allow Benton County to engage the public in a more thorough interaction as to how and, and what process the vehicle camping ordinance should look like in a permanent form. So how long that intermediate ordinance will last is something you'll need to consider. So that's enough to process, don't you think now?
That's helpful, Vance. Should we take those separately, the emergency ordinance and the intermediate step?
So I, technically, the process that would occur is you would have a public hearing to enact two ordinances, and one would be an emergency ordinance, one would be the intermediate ordinance. And correct me if I'm wrong, Greg, but I believe the idea is that they would be identical. And that you, if you're so inclined, you would vote to approve the enactment of an emergency ordinance, then you would have a second vote, and that vote would be to enact the intermediate ordinance. They would all happen at the same public hearing. There'd be an additional process, you have to go to the second reading for the intermediate ordinance, but it would be taken up at the same time, they would be identical ordinances.
Thank you.
Are you nodding, Greg?
Yeah.
Eagerously?
You can't see me. I was making some other gestures to, no, I'm completely agreement. Just to put specifics to it, if we held a public hearing on May 5th, we would enact, or you, the board, could enact the emergency ordinance upon passage on May 5th, and it would expire on July 4th, 60 days later. You would also on May 5th conduct the first reading of the intermediate ordinance, and then conduct the second reading of that ordinance on May 19th, and it would become effective upon expiration of the emergency ordinance, so on July 4th. And then the question is, what is the sunset date that we put into that intermediate order? So I, as I laid this out, I really have four questions for the board. One, that is one of those, but actually, the first question is, does the board want us to proceed with immediate adoption of this as an emergency ordinance? Kedel Tormesa, we can bring that forward to you. Seen one thumbs up? Okay.
Hey, Greg, this is Greg, the sheriff's office.
Yeah.
I understand where you're going with this, but I'm not sure everybody understands the unintended consequences of this. When you're talking about the sheriff's office or law enforcement waking people up in the middle of the night, it's not because we find them out there, it's because people call us and let us know that they have concerns out there. They're either engaging in activity that's causing them alarm, or they're, they're trespassing where they think they have the right to stay, and they don't. They're causing concern for the people who reside in these areas out there that have, they're not used to having people sleep in their, in their fields or in their barns or any areas like that. When we contact them or we get calls of them, we're going to respond. And if they think they have the authority to stay there based upon this activity, our options are going to be limited, and we're going to be telling people that there's nothing we can do, you have to let them stay engaged in whatever activity they're doing. And again, if we continue this later on, it's, it's going to cause problems for law enforcement. It's going to cause problems for the citizens that have property out there in the county that's going to be mistaken for county property. I think it's a bad idea, but it's one of those situations where the unintended consequences of trying to help a small minority of the people is going to cause a great deal of problems out there. I, I don't know how else we're going to deal with it. We're going to still get calls, no matter what the ordinance says, and we're going to respond out there to people causing problems.
Zan?
I understand the perspective from law enforcement, Greg. The, if this ordinance only allows for car camping on religious organizations' property, in a synagogue, temple, you know, mosque, churches. And so I think we need to be very clear about that. The institutions that have expressed interest in this so far are primarily in places that are a bit, they're buffered from private residences. And the expectation is that the congregations and the employees of those religious institutions will have programs in place to support these people, not just going to be willy-nilly. And there's been an awful lot of intention expressed about case management and helping these people find permanent residences and not having this become something that is a problem. So I think it's not just camping in someone's field. It's not just camping in a parking lot that appears to be available. There's a more organized intent here, and I'm sure that Sarah could probably address that further, as could Danielle or Julie.
Sarah, or Julie, Danielle, Sarah, why don't you go ahead?
I think Commissioner Ogero did a good job of explaining the intent of the emergency code. And it is, what it does is enable religious institutions in unincorporated areas to allow for this to occur. It doesn't mean that if they're mandated for this to happen, it means if this congregation is willing to have an individual or individuals in vehicles on their property, up to three vehicles, then, and then that's, you know, that would be up to the congregation. And again, the intent is to allow for a place of stability, case management, connection to services, and really a place to be instead of having to move from place to place. That doesn't mean there won't potentially be issues. However, this is, you know, providing kind of a legal mechanism for folks to be able to have a stable place to be.
This is Joe Kirby. I'd just like to introduce, if folks haven't looked at this policy in detail, if you'll go to Section 10, commissioners, I think it's important to highlight that when we're talking about vehicles, that's the term that we use in the actually draft document. But you definitely need to look at the definition of a vehicle in Section 10. It actually is interpreted, in my opinion, to be more than a vehicle, and I think this allows for potentially micro shelter. So I'm just confirming with staff that while we're using the term vehicle, you're actually using that in a broad sense to apply not only to actual cars and trucks and RVs, but also to micro shelters. Is that the intention?
That's correct. Yeah, that was, the concept developed in concert with the City of Corvallis Community Development as they were looking at similar provisions. And so, yes, the intent of this draft would be to allow vehicles in the more standard sense, as well as a micro shelter. So that's not a defined term, but a temporary transportable sleeping unit that, or living unit, I guess we have a phrase here, that's consistent with standards that the county establishes, which we would be relying on the City of Corvallis standards as the basis for that.
Greg, how would this actually be applied to the First Congregational Church situation that we have? Because this emergency ordinance would allow up to three, as I understand it, vehicles and/or micro shelters. And I realize that the First Congregational Church has been going through a, a conditional use permit with you that I believe has been put on hold. So they actually have more than three micro shelters. So can you explain how this would apply or not apply in that particular situation?
Right, so the First Congregational Church has, is in the process of seeking land use approval to establish church activities on the vacant piece of property adjacent to the main facility. In, as part of that, they are requesting to be able to use six micro shelters. That's in process. We were about to go to planning commission hearing when hearings, essentially gatherings, got shut down. So we're figuring out a timeframe and a process for taking that through the public hearing process in the fairly near future. In the, in the meantime, or maybe, I don't know the timing relatively one to the other, but if this ordinance, emergency ordinance were to be adopted, the church could potentially apply for use of three micro shelters under this ordinance, or three vehicles under this ordinance. I think that would be at least separate from the conditional use permit. Haven't thought it through all the way at that point.
Greg, let me jump in here. I, I'm not certain I, I agree totally with that. I'm looking at number four on the handout, and that adjacent piece of property has not been approved for church activities. That is the purpose of the conditional use application. So even if the emergency ordinance is passed, that adjacent piece of property, which is in the county jurisdiction, does not have land use approval to conduct church activities. So my reading of the direction of this, this particular emergency code provision would be that it would not allow the church to get there yet because it does not have land use approval for that county's own property.
I agree, and I could have remembered that since I wrote that section.
You know, this is why Greg and I always talk ahead of time, so we try to be on the same page.
And commissioners, I bring this up. And commissioners, I bring this up not to have us get stuck on a technicality today, but just to let you know that I believe that there's several conflicts in terms of policies that we're either creating or administering. And so Greg, I, I just look to you for any clarity as we move forward on that issue.
Yeah, thank you, Joe. Right, so the way this is proposed, the First Congregational Church would not be able to utilize this provision on their vacant piece of property at this point, if and when they receive conditional use approval for church activities on that vacant land, then they could take advantage of it. Presumably, they could utilize the City of Corvallis' provisions on the portion of their property where the main facility is, which is located inside Cityville.
Well, it's obvious that communication is vitally important to make sure that it's clear what is allowed and what is not. Under Sheriff Riddler, do you have any specific concerns about, about this ordinance?
I think I've already expressed them. I, I see this causing issues with the sheriff's office and, and the church issue already is, is part of that, is they do these living arrangements on church property for people who obey the rules. The ones who don't obey the rules go onto the adjacent property and cause problems, which we get calls on, and of course, it's going back and forth. I don't see it just limited to religious institutions. I see other places looking for the same kind of opportunities to expand shelters. And it's going to, and I don't, and Vance, maybe you could help me out on a little bit of the eviction process we're going to go through if these turn into confrontational processes for people who, who take advantage of these. I have concerns, I've expressed them, I think that's all I can do right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, in terms of eviction process, my understanding that the ordinance is being drafted such that the property owner that is allowing the vehicular camping is responsible for ejecting the occupants, not Benson County. So candidly, Greg, I don't know how the landlord-tenant laws would interact with a temporary vehicle camping code. I don't know whether that would trigger 30-day notice. I don't know whether a sharp defense attorney could argue that these are more like RV parks which require 180-day notice. I have no idea. I honestly don't know, so. But the good news is, it would not be Benson County's responsibility to eject these individuals who overstayed their welcome. The bad news is, it could create quite a challenge for neighboring property owners if something like that did occur.
And I appreciate that, Vance, especially the fact that you don't know and I don't know. And I know what's going to happen, though, when no one knows, is we're going to get calls, and we're going to respond there, and without our knowing what to do, we're going to end up there again and again. Because that's what happens now when we have tenant landlord issues where there's, we have a pretty set response now. If we get a situation where someone refuses to move out of the church parking lot in their car, the church called us to remove them, we're going to have a potential for conflict, and we're not going to have an easy answer. And I, and I see it going to a defense attorney, I'm not sure your definition of anyway, but we're going to have conflict on these situations. And without a clear answer, and it, we can anticipate it, but I guess we'll figure out when we get there.
Yeah, if, if the board is inclined to move forward this proposal, Greg, I will do some investigating so that come May 5th, I can at least have maybe a bit more information for you, if not an answer.
Okay, and this is a, a draft, and it sounds like it needs a little more work, Greg. So before May 5th, you and Vance work your magic, and then we'll have a proposal that we will, we will take on, take up on the 5th of May. Is that accurate?
That is. I would like to get, if possible, forward input on a couple other points within the draft.
Okay.
Those are, well, one of them is the one Vance brought up earlier, is that if you do adopt an emergency and then an interim ordinance with a sunset date, what's that sunset date? How long? Do we have this in place before going up for a full public engagement and public hearing process on a potential permanent ordinance? One of the benefits of which, if we have a sunset date and then are committed to revisiting this, we can look at lessons learned, we can look at how the experience went over the first, first six months, or year, or however long, the issues that came up through law enforcement, other issues that we didn't foresee, and try to better address those in a more permanent ordinance. So on that point, in terms of a sunset date, I don't have the crystal ball on what things are going to look like in six months or a year, but just knowing about the time it takes for a public engagement process, and wanting some stability in this situation for at least a little while, my relatively uninformed suggestion is six months to a year. But I would like to hear from others.
Greg, I have, and Greg, I was going to suggest at sunset December 31st, 2021, that gives you really 18 months, and knowing how the marijuana public engagement went that took a long time, I don't think this is going to be any less intensive. So having something a little bit longer and something as, something that we can easily remember might be beneficial. What are you, what are you smiling about, Zan?
You're not that old, Vance, you can remember some stuff like that. Sorry, I haven't had a chance to tease you for a long time, that's one of the things I really miss thinking about not being on the often.
Oh, that makes two of us.
All right, Greg, did you have another point you wanted to go over?
Yes, so in the text that was sent to you just yesterday, one of the highlighted sections is, relates to whether we, in our ordinance, limit the number of people camping per, per religious institution, or just the number of vehicles. So we have to limit the number of these vehicles, the maximum is three. But is there a, a need and a purpose served by further limiting the actual number of people? For example, saying that per vehicle, the maximum of two adults and their dependent children, it could be a different limit. That's something we need direction on. So the, the extremes are, you know, that somebody could bring in a school bus or a large RV with many people potentially. How likely is that? Is that going to be a problem? I don't know, but just want to point out that when we think of camping in vehicles, we typically think of a small number of people in a, in a smaller vehicle, or in a, potentially in a micro shelter. So that's the question I would like some feedback on.
On Zan?
Could we leave it more broad and not say how many per vehicle, but say no more, no more than three vehicles than no more than 20 people total? And leave it up to the institution to determine whether one vehicle has one person and another has, you know, five? A family of five? You know, I, I just don't know. I'm looking for some way to have flexibility and not to dictate that it has to be a nuclear family, but not to leave it wide open.
Sarah Hearthstein, Julia Rena, do you have any thoughts on the magic number?
I don't have thoughts on a magic number, other than leaving it broad at this point and allowing the religious institutions to make that determination. For me, as a, you know, not, not thinking this through fully, I'll be honest. For me, leaving it more broad as a pilot, or as a temporary ordinance that's going to sunset at a certain point, without putting a number on it. I think if you put a number like 20, you know, folks will, will put 20. If you leave it more broad, you know, there's only a certain amount of folks that you can get in three vehicles. So, you know, if you have more than 10 people, you're going to have to have additional porta-potties. I mean, there's all sorts of services that you would need to provide, the more individuals you have on your property. My guess is that we're not going to see three school buses on a church property with 50 people. And I don't think religious institutions are going to be able to support that. So I, I think I'd leave it more broad at this point.
Hi, Charlie, this is Brian Lee, related to, you know, COVID-19 policy stuff. I'll let you guys decide how to enforce the ordinance and the number of people and all that, but if the intent is to address the COVID-19 issue, which I, what I'm hearing is that's what this is supposed to solve, you probably, I'm going to throw it out there, and maybe Charlie needs to say more about it, but I would say you should put some sort of cap on it, because otherwise, we're getting into a lot of course, an issue of gatherings over X number of people and all of that. And it ropes the sheriff's office back into that discussion. And also, I thought the idea of this was so they could, they could isolate and quarantine. And I understand if there's a family of three or four people in a car, or living out of an RV, I get they're not going to socially isolate from each other, but if we're creating another congregation point, are we solving the COVID-19 problem? I'll just leave it at that, and let you guys sort that one.
Excellent point.
Commissioners, I would also like to add, keeping in mind something that Vance brought up a little bit earlier, that this, in my mind, is directed at the COVID-19 issue, and we have the issue of public process and public input, public testimony, and I think we need to take that into consideration because we're foregoing a lot of that process at this point, and potentially adopting something for up to 18 months. And so I just have a cautionary note for you.
If I may, Joe, and commissioners, I would want to highlight the Conveo tool that Greg's team rolled out earlier in the fall, utilized during the industrial zone code amendments and the rural, was it rural residential, Greg? Code amendments. And in some initial conversations with Julia Rena and Rebecca Taylor about this potential ordinance, I had suggested utilizing Conveo as a method to ensure public access and transparency during the first reading and second reading process, because I agree, Joe, that certainly we would want to, from my perspective, ensure that we're getting the public information out there in advance and providing what opportunity we can using digital tools.
Thank you, Lilia. Lilia, would you define Conveo?
Um, yes.
For those of us who don't know what you're talking about.
Yes, I'm glad that Greg has got his microphone at the ready to help me out, to describe Conveo. But Conveo is an online platform that allows for members of the community to see edited versions of code, and in this case, ordinance language, and then directly comment into the document on the language. So it provides access to individuals who wouldn't be able to physically participate in the in-person public hearing process. And so it was piloted, as I mentioned, for the first time this past fall.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Greg, is there anything else you want to add about that program?
That summarizes it well. I would say we had mixed results with it in the situation we used it in, but that was a fairly complex and lengthy and detailed set of codes, whereas this is essentially one-page, so it might work better.
And then I would add that.
It's Commissioner Hartman.
So let me just, let me just.
Yeah, Greg, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Annabelle.
All right. Now, this isn't too unlikely, but discussions we've had in the past in terms of what happens on, on church properties, I recall we had similar conversations, although not identical to this, when we had the, the church out north, north of Corvallis, I forget which one it was, but I, I really understand all the concerns that are around this, including those that have been raised by Greg, but I know we've had these, these conversations before.
Vance?
Getting back, getting back to the, what, what was the name of that?
Conveo.
Conveo. With the governor's executive order that allows us to conduct public hearings without oral testimony, this Conveo concept seems to dovetail neatly into an opportunity on May 5th to have a public hearing where we accept written or digital comments without having anybody in the room providing oral testimony. So it seems like it is a, a well-timed addition to our arsenal of options available to the public.
And to summarize my initial point, commissioners, I think without public testimony and, and the ability for the public to be significantly involved in this process, I would recommend that you go more conservatively in terms of what you're putting out there in this emergency declaration, if you're not going to be able to allow sufficient public testimony. So if you allow sufficient public testimony, then going more liberal in terms of numbers and so on, might be okay, but in the absence of that, I would highly recommend that you start out more conservatively.
And I'm going to echo Joe's comment.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
I would argue for change.
I, I think everybody knows this is going to be a very hot topic, regardless of whether it's, it's done through an emergency ordinance, or regardless of whether Greg puts forward, you know, an 18-month process to gather public information. It's, it's going to generate a lot of interest, and perhaps one way to look at your emergency ordinance is as a baby step that maybe gets the public used to this concept, rather than going, you know, to the nth degree that might scare off some folks that are currently ambiguous on this particular topic. And I think Brian's point about the social distancing and the large gathering is an excellent one, because if the Benton County Board of Commissioners were to enact an ordinance that seemed to throw those notions out the window, we could be in for a fair amount of criticism. Also, with our own employees, we would look fairly hypocritical. So we can't be mindful of the impression that the public is going to form based on how you present this topic.
I have one comment that I'd like to add, just touching on Brian Lee's point and Vance's point that he just said. In case folks haven't yet had the opportunity to review Governor Brown's reopening Oregon proposal, in phase one, groups are still limited to 10 people. So I just want to underscore that point, that for the foreseeable future, we will be in a status quo situation with regard to congregating.
So, and I, thanks, Lilia, and I think I would add to that, that if, if the Board of Commissioners choose to move forward with limiting to 10 and not leaving it broad, I think either way, we would be committed to engaging religious institutions that would be enabled under this ordinance and providing them guidance, that's, in general, in guidance, guidance on this, but also, you know, following prevention measures, measures for COVID-19. So I think that would be a part of it, and I'm looking at Charlie and hoping that he'll not.
We'll take that as a nod. Charlie? Julie?
Yeah. Yeah, the one thing I would add, I think as you release this publicly, you say that the intention and the purpose is to allow for sheltering in place with people you are already co-inhabitants with. So if you have a family living in an RV and you are cohabitating with them, you know, that's the purpose, is to be able to shelter in place with your co-inhabitants and to physically distance from other households. So if a church is going to allow three families who are cohabitating together, they need to be physically distanced enough so they can shelter in place with their co-inhabitants, physically distanced from other households. And I think that would be part of the press release that goes with this. But if you had three families with, you know, two parents and three children each in an RV, and they're separated 100 feet away from each other, that's 15 people. And in the rural areas in Alcee, I think the Carol and Mind who has given this feedback repeatedly, I think putting a number cap on it might limit to smaller families. Share that, thank you.
Okay. So it sounds like, at least on the emergency declaration, to make sure we are following the guidelines from the governor and maybe others on how to go about our business in a safe manner. I think we're helping define the ordinance and get it as specific as we can. But I had that thought of the situation we're in with CV-19 and honoring those rules and guidelines. Anything else, Greg?
Well, so I just want to be, want to nail this point down. Sorry, because if we're going to a public hearing on the 5th, we need an ordinance that is as close to what you want it to be as possible. So I heard limiting to 10, I heard some further discussion from the three commissioners. Do you have a consensus on it, or should we push that decision to the hearing?
Well, limiting to 10, if there's half an acre of space, I'm not sure makes sense or reasonable distance. So I guess my thought would be, the situation has to fit the CV-19 guidelines that we're dealing with. That is the emergency ordinance that we're dealing with. I saw Zan was voting for limiting to 10 or fewer. Annabelle, any comments?
10 seems the right number for me.
Okay.
So then, just to clarify then, that the, we would not limit the number per vehicle, but the total number allowed on the property with three occupied vehicles would be 10? Is that accurate?
It's accurate.
Okay.
And so then, then my next question is, remember, we're looking at this intermediate ordinance, and the presumption is the intermediate ordinance is going to outlast our emergency declaration. Do you still want that 10 to be included in the intermediate ordinance? And I'm sorry if it's complicating things, but the emergency ordinance really is designed to address the COVID-19 issue. Our immediate ordinance, intermediate ordinance is designed to get you to a point to consider a permanent ordinance.
And this is Danielle. Do those have to be the same thing? Do they have to be mirrored language?
They do not. They do not. I would say that for the purpose of assuring the public that we're not trying to gradually move the ball on them, they ought to be as close as possible.
I would add too, that if they're both going to a May 5th public hearing with one that's going to be adopted through July 4th and one that's going to a second reading, those are nuanced details that really only government employees understand. And the advantage to having the ordinance language more similarly matched between the emergency and the intermediate ordinance would help with general public understanding and, I think, reaction to the ordinance. As we have said, we wouldn't want to appear utilizing the crisis or confusion in scheduling to kind of pull one over on folks.
I would say that I don't think that we will necessarily be finished with the COVID-19 situation by December 31st, 2021. I would love to think so, but I don't believe that.
Oh, oh, we better be.
Yeah. Yeah, so I think that 10 is a conservative number, and it may be that in a particular church, they only have one family that is a large family, or two vehicles, you know, each of whom has several children. But that, I think, is a reasonable number, and I think it's a great way to start and check this out slowly.
So to Julie's point about the larger families, I wonder if there's any way to put language in there that says a maximum of 10 people with an exception for nuclear families that have already been living together that have larger groups, with parents and three or four kids?
Sarah? Sarah?
So I guess I would go back to recommending that it's less broadly, and maybe the language, it looks more like, you know, following communal disease prevention guidelines, or something like that in the ordinance, or, you know, so that the wording matches in both the emergency and the longer-term or midterm ordinance that would expire or sunset after 18 months. But then, you know, including something that is, you know, as, you know, for recommended by the TDC, OHA, or your local health department. I'm wondering if that could potentially be an option. And then Danielle, you know, we wouldn't be limiting families with 11 individuals potentially. And then, you know, it would just be a little cleaner and more flexible.
What's that? Rebecca?
I'm wondering if similar language that we have for single-family dwellings where we have a limit on unrelated adults might be beneficial in this case?
Thank you.
That's an excellent idea, Rebecca.
Commissioners also pointing out, under Section 9 of the draft, there are a couple of options there that give the community development director and/or the county administrator ability to maybe provide exceptions. And so just taking that into account, that might help address Sarah's concern. Or it could be, for example, the health department director and the community development director regarding any exception. So you could say the limit is 10 unless otherwise exempted by... Vance has given me a dirty look.
I am. We're in danger, Will Robbins, in danger. It just, I just would worry about the time suck that that may create as you get more and more religious institutions and you have the flux of vehicles changing. Is that really more time that you want your community development director to help administrate you to invest in as you roll toward January 31st, 2021?
So the reason that I suggest that Vance is, I think what Danielle was suggesting in terms of having to quantify exactly unrelated family members living together prior, I mean, there's all kinds of variables that we enter into regarding this. And so for me, just trying to find a balance between where we have a policy in effect that has certain limits but also provides some flexibility. So that's what I'm looking for, is where's that middle ground for the board and for staff where this could be administered in such a way that is not the time suck that you're indicating and yet gives flexibility in the process.
And I guess I would, I would just add that the flexibility, I think, would come in our permanent ordinance. I mean, Greg alluded to this opportunity to figure out what's working, what isn't working, what kind of adjustments we might want to make. So if we, if we do have a hard and fast number on the people that we're allowing on property, and we get, you know, a year into this process, and we get, start getting public comment, we started getting comments from the churches who have these vehicles on their property saying, "This isn't working," that's the kind of information that would be really helpful as we roll toward a more permanent ordinance that we go with.
I agree. We will definitely gain understanding as we go through this process. Another thing that I think this reflects is when we talk about multiple churches working together, if you did have a certain limit at a site, for example, 10, then the staff and churches could work to orchestrate, how do you maintain no more than 10? And maybe you switch which church a particular folks are going to, so that you can limit 10 across the board. So I think it just engages the churches more to try and strike that balance and moving people around to make sure they're under the limit.
Yeah, no, I think that's a really good point, because that would foster cooperation and coordination. And if one of the ideas is to ensure that the various church properties have good access to facilities and resources, having all those churches communicate might be a good way to help allocate distribution of some of those resources. I guess that's the ideal.
Great. Greg, a thought just occurred to me, I think maybe we need to wrap this topic up. Do you want to get back to us next week? We have two board meetings, one on Tuesday, the 28th, and one on Thursday, the 30th, to see what you could do to tighten up the draft, get back to us with maybe a more limited number of questions, and then so that we're ready for our May 5th discussion.
I'm going to jump in, Greg. Remember, we have notice requirements.
Okay.
So the version of the ordinance that is going to be put before you, if you're going to go for May 5th, needs to be noticed and on our website, no less than seven days before the public hearing. So by my count, that's Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. So you have just Tuesday to consider any alterations. So just be aware that if the objective is to have this on your agenda for May 5th, you're in the middle of a time crunch on it.
Okay. Is that clear, Greg?
Yeah, we can, I can do some wording or some more narrowed options together for you to consider, and hopefully in an efficient manner, we'll do our best to line up some options that way. And, yeah, okay, we can definitely do that.
Any other comments on this topic?
Just checking my notes, sorry. Yeah, that's, I think we can address the two questions that remain. They relate, they're all about this topic, so we can do that at the next, um, we convene on this next two things.
Please.
I just want to thank the team. Thank you very much for bringing this to us.
And that's Tuesday, April 28th, at 9 o'clock start time.
Very good.
Appreciate the efforts, and I think the good news is this was in progress for a number of months, and so a lot of discussion has been had already, and hopefully we're down to a couple relatively small points to get ironed out. But I think it is important to meet the May 5th meeting deadline, so. Thanks, Vance, for clarifying our schedule. Next up, Benton County's potential for financial assistance to nonprofits. We have Benton Community Foundation, Chris Quaka. Are you still with us, Chris?
And Commissioner, I'm going to go first.
I am.
Okay, great. Joe Kirby is going to lead off the discussion, just wanted to make sure you were still there.
Commissioners, the discussion that we're putting in front of you today really emanates from a conversation we've had over time over the last three weeks about ways in which the county can potentially help nonprofits that are assisting folks in our community relative to the coronavirus response. As a result of numerous conversations that Mary Ottley and I have had, and some email communication that Chris Quaka and I have had, this is really the culmination of those numerous conversations in terms of what you're seeing presented in front of you today. So I would like Mary to interject before we turn it over to Chris, because she's been kind of the go-between facilitating this particular proposal. So, Mary?
Thank you. Commissioners, as I said in my email to you last night, that spent a lot of time trying to determine how best the county can meet the needs of some of the nonprofits, and what really came to a head is, one, is that right now, the current staffing in the county, we just don't have the capacity to do a good analysis and allocation process. And so at that point, I went, all right, well, how else can we get this done? Looked at several opportunities to work partner with agencies that could help us distribute funds, and the Benton Foundation became the one that I chose. And so I've been in conversation with Chris about how they could possibly work with the county to get funds to some of the nonprofits. And so that's what he wrote up this proposal, and that's what you're seeing here today. What we did talk about, I know Chris has very generously put $150,000 as an allocation. I didn't promise $150,000. I said it could be $100,000, maybe $150,000, but that would be decided later. So that is a point of discussion for you to decide. Another point is, and when Chris talked to you, is there some decisions you'll need to make if we want to direct where these funds go? We can't direct to an agency, but we can give some guidance to the types of agencies. And so there are some, later on in the, probably on page three or four, there's some decision points that we'll be asking you to make as far as directing the use of these funds. And so with that, right now, I'll just turn it over to Chris, and he can talk. And if you have any questions, jump in.
Well, thank you, Mary. And I just want to say to the county commissioners and everyone on the phone, thank you for all this work for our community. It's very inspiring, and we're happy to be talking to you today about your potential support, additional support, I would add, financial support for local nonprofits. I will try to keep this short. I will, I will try to keep this short, with respect to your time. And I just really appreciate Mary and Joe considering also as a partner. Couple things to point out, Mary is right, we did put in $150,000 and gave you a very quick plan in a letter for your review. And that would be something that we could do quite easily. And we have plenty of applications coming in from nonprofits to meet those needs. Of course, we can do less. It's really up to the impact you think these funds can make in the short term. Now, not to the fact part of it all the way, it's really how we view this. The foundation, well, this is some very quick action because of some funds we've raised in the past, great partnerships we have with United Way of Lincoln County, then the Oregon Community Foundation, and local private foundations. So we're very fortunate that as of two minutes ago, we've raised about $195,000 towards this effort in less than five weeks. The response fund, we are in phase one, which we really say is from March to August. This proposal and what we are hearing from our partners, United Way, would expect to spend out the funds we have raised to date sometime around the end of June or July of this year. We are trying to really backfill operational needs of the nonprofits that has been on the front end of this along with your staff from as early as early March of this year. In August and October, we hope to launch phase two, which we envisioned similar to some of your phone calls, or I'm sorry, some of your discussion earlier lasting really until 2021. So we're right now working with some of our partners to see how we can respond throughout next, I would say, full year, right? And on page four, it talks about those timelines, our operationability, page five, some of those considerations. I think those are important things to cover. We really focused on those organizations that are really on the front lines. So basic services and supportive services and housing opportunities are outlined in the middle of page five on our rough definitions of that. As Mary mentioned, if you were to pass these funds along to us, you couldn't tell them what nonprofit to send them to, but you could say, we want this portion to focus on rural Benton County. We want this portion to focus on this particular population, whether it's people who are unhoused or undocumented immigrants in our community. On page six, you'll see what we've done to date. It's laid out in the, essentially, we are meeting with community members who are helping our board and staff direct gifts on every other week basis. And then those grants, which we're looking at every other week, are then dispersed in the community within five to seven business days. And I should note that, you know, the funds that we're giving out and raising, you know, raising $190,000 in five weeks, no small feat for our small team. That being said, you know, we annually give out 300, three quarters of a million dollars a year, every year. And last year, we gave out those size of funds to 80 different nonprofits. So we are equipped and we have relationships with over 60 local nonprofits where we're checking their financials, we know their teams, and we work with them all the time. So we'd like to think we have a frontline view of what's happening in the world, or at least what they're willing to show us. At page Q on page seven, and that's some information about the foundation. On eight, what we can annually, nine, our staff, and some addendums, which includes the example application for funding. It's important to note the application and the questions within it have then agreed upon between us and United Way. We also share all the applications we get between us and United Way. And our questions and the broad parameters of these gifts are really made in concert with Oregon Community Foundation's standards for giving around this idea. So the questions that we use are similar to OCAP. What's enabled us to do as local funders is really streamline the grant making process for those nonprofits that are asking us for help. And then page 12, you'll see a very short letter that we send to recipients. This is an actual recipient that received some funds from us last week, and this was one of the first applications we received. I think that is the 10,000-foot view and the brief overview I could give on. You know, I think the last thing that I would say is that we would be excited to help the county release these funds. It would be hard for me to advise you to take your time in releasing these funds. You know, my previous work in disaster areas like this, the organizations that need help or that may fail financially, and then those burdens fall on local governments possibly to filling those gaps, they, they need the money upfront now. And of course, that sounds like a person that works with nonprofits, but really, we're trying to financially stabilize those nonprofits so they can help us again in the fall support the communities that they're supporting today. Many of our customers in the area want streamlined budgets, streamlined staff, and we hope we could help you distribute funds to them in a way that is responsible to the taxpayer, but also makes the biggest impact we can in the community. And with that, I'd open it up for any questions that you may have.
We're happy to start. And again, I have to make it as close as I am on the board of the Benton Community Foundation. So, but I'm approaching this particular topic from the standpoint of working closely with the nonprofits on food and shelter issues over the past several weeks. And I've been struggling with how we can best support some of the nonprofits whose resources are getting really thin. And from the core values perspective, the one that I'm most concerned about is the mental health of the shelter and them being able to continue their hygiene center operations moving forward on behalf of the household population. But I see the range of folks that have been funded and I'm really appreciative of the fact that there are many that are out of this county. And I'm equally concerned about those folks that are undocumented, that have no recourse to any of the resources. And so I think this is a great vehicle and very happy that we have this option. Thank you.
Of course.
Commissioner Ozerow, I would just like to mention a topic that you brought up. As the board considers doing this, I think we've got to reconcile a potential conflict. And that conflict is next Tuesday on April 28th, the staff will be bringing to the board two specific funding requests that have come from the EOC. One of those relative to the hygiene center, another one in response to supporting Safe Camp. And so as we talk about setting up this financial tool to assist nonprofits, are we going to be directing these ultimately to the Benton Community Foundation? Or are the ones coming from the EOC not going to go through the Benton Community Foundation? So Commissioner Ozerow?
To me, the real question is, there are two points. One is reimbursability, and some of these kinds of expenses will be reimbursable under FEMA guidelines. And those, I think, should come through us and we should go for that reimbursement. But the other is just speed. There's a need for immediate funding and the EOC process is anything but fast. And I'm concerned about some of these services being able to have continuity in the near term. And so I think the answer is both, and we just have to be clear about how we do that. It will take a little bit more strategy from the EOC side to make sure that that's the case.
Well, and from my perspective, it also impacts how we look at things financially. For example, in the proposal that's in front of you today from Chris, it identifies a target of $150,000, $50,000 each month for three months. I can tell you, Mary and I have had so many conversations, probably three times a day over the course of the last month regarding the county's financial ability to fund some of these programs. The board is also considering funding assistance for economic development purposes. We'll be talking more about that next Tuesday. And so we're beginning to see the costs associated with the EOC. And my point being is I would encourage the board to be conservative financially speaking as it comes to these multiple things that we're taking action on. And for example, in this particular case, when I touched on the hygiene center proposal that's coming before you next Tuesday, that proposal's about $18,000 a month. The Safe Camp proposal is about $6,000 per month. And so, you know, we may want to look at that $150,000 that had been targeted by Chris and say, well, maybe it's $100,000 and the other $50,000 needs to be reserved for the other requests coming from the EOC, at least initially. But Mary and I just can use some direction from the board because we only have certain pools of money and each pool only has a certain dollar amount in it. And I would say, speaking on Mary and my's behalf, we're becoming increasingly concerned about our ability to fund multiple programs at the same time trying to figure out what's reimbursable and not reimbursable. Brian and I did have a conversation earlier today on that topic, and if Brian is still here, it may be a good opportunity for him to weigh in.
Mike, this is Annabelle, and I'm really concerned about, I think, Joe, you're right on, we've actually really talked this through very carefully. Once we start down this road, we know that there's going to be requests for continuance of it and we've got to think about the future as well. So whatever our planning is, we need to kind of try to work it out in such a way that the rules are real clear. I hate to return to rules, but we've got to have some sideboards.
Perspective to dollar value, I agree, Joe. I think that $150 is probably more than we can afford to put in at this time. And, and we, I don't know whether we want to think about putting or put most of the money into the Benton Community Foundation and not worry about reimbursement because we know that the whole concept of why the reimbursement is going to be expensive, that's that's why, just to get there. I don't feel qualified to make that call. I think that's the best made by you and by Mary. But I think that this is a good and expedient way for us to get some assistance out to our local nonprofits earlier. So I'd be fine with a lower dollar amount going through Benton Community Foundation at this time and just thinking about it and sort, you know, in that industry, I think, and then adding to it perhaps later as you can see more clearly where finances are at the county. And I think we're going to have to make some strategic cuts to the county.
Well, I think every, every budget is in flux. The state budget forecast, I believe, is next May 19th. I've seen notice going out for State Department to plan on a, I believe, a 17%, no, it's an 8% cut because we're so far into the biennium that it, in effect, is a 17% cut being proposed. Kind of everybody is flying blind. There is some federal dollars coming in, but we don't know, a lot of times don't know where it's coming to and what kind of restrictions. So I, I'm conflicted. I think the Community Foundation is a great vehicle that has the expertise and has pretty good pulse on what's going on in the community and where the needs are. But balanced that against, we don't really know, and I'm sure Mary can give us more detail, but don't really know where, where we are currently. We had a budget, didn't we, Mary?
Commissioners, I want to tell you that the source of this, where the source of these funds are, they're not coming from any department's operating budget. We charge departments a payroll charge for workers comp on an annual basis. And that amount that we pay for any claim is capped each year. And so if you look at our budget in detail, there's a cost center for each year. And so this is excess funds that we have, that we've collected from employees or departments to fund workers comp. So we had some good years that we can let some of these funds go. As you know, we have a really bad year coming up, but again, it's capped. And this, this, these funds were not built into the budget at all. But that's, we're about at the end of those kinds of funds that we can get to. So as far as reaching out and touching the department's budget, it won't.
Thank you. So you're, go ahead.
Ozanne?
I just was thanking Mary for that clarification and appreciate that. And again, from my perspective, providing even $90,000 now for the next three months is an incredible investment in making sure that the nonprofits stay functional and stay capable of providing the services that they're providing now and providing key public health services, frankly, to members of our community that are very vulnerable. I think that they are an essential part of the fabric of this community and I want them to keep their doors open.
If I can pop in a minute, for me, it's not as much about the dollars that you would roll into the community. This is a great vehicle, hopefully, that you will choose to use. And the dollars are really up to you and we can, we can custom fit the dollars and the time. That's easy to do. We are actively staying away from reimbursable FEMA items. And so United Way and DCAP are trying to stay out of reimbursable items that you might be able to bring several dollars into the community because our dollars are limited. And then I think the important thing to note is the value add that nonprofit workers and their volunteers bring to our community. So for a fraction of the cost for public health workers to do this work, you have partners and nonprofits in the community. So you're, so while you might consider a $50,000 gift and a challenging, but it's not a lot of funds, I guarantee you those gifts now being put in the nonprofits will keep that money in our local economy. But the initial return on those funds is going to be two to threefold just in the less cost of doing public services with nonprofit partnering. And I would add as much more, like by the data, you know, it's going to be roughly 60% of the cost for your and your staff team to do it. So just a couple of things for you to consider as you make a decision. And again, this is, this was, this can be turned on at any time on our end depending on the other processes. And I feel like this is a very unique move by all of you and a great way to look at the problem in a different way. So we're at the ready when you are.
Annabelle, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I actually was, thank you, Chris, for that. My comment was, you know, right now, we're operating with, we, I recognize that we have some money left over, some other things, but thank you, Mary, for that conversation. And I realize the need is, there's a big need right now. I would like us to, however, at some point in time after this has all calmed down, is look at this issue and do it in a more systematic fashion in our, in our budgeting process. Right now, we're in a reactionary mode and I understand why we need to act. I would just hope that in the future, we would, we would look at this a little bit more intensely and, and plan a little better.
Okay, thank you.
Mary, a question for you. We do have a charitable giving policy, if I remember correctly. Does this fly in the face of that in any way, shape, or form?
Well, Joe, we actually have two. The charitable giving policy has to do with payroll reduction. And then in our financial policies, we have the outside funding policy. And then in our financial policies, we have the outside funding policy that nonprofits are, can act at the time we're developing the budget to be included in our budget. So we didn't really, in that policy, we didn't, nor could we have imagined, but this happening and having to have emergency decisions made. It does say that the Board has discretion outside the budget to make these decisions as well.
Great, thank you. Vance, a legal question for you. If we were to move forward with the Benton Community Foundation, is there any type of MOU or contract or that we would need to draft?
We would probably want a MOU, yeah. And I think we've...
Van?
Yes, ma'am.
I asked Chris that question yesterday, and he forwarded me one of their fund agreements that I was going to share with you to see if we could use that.
Perfect.
Perfect, okay.
So our work just got a little easier. Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, great job, Chris. Thanks, Mary. So Board, any feedback you have for us today on whether or not to move forward with this proposal would be helpful? And if so, at what dollar amount are you interested in funding?
Annabelle?
I'm okay with moving forward with that. I would like, I'd like to try to set the top limit at $100,000. I'm okay with that.
Okay. Chris, I think the commissioners are in agreement to proceed. Is there any problem with us getting, dealing with the specifics, maybe at our Tuesday Board meeting, so we have a little more time to flesh out any details that we want to give to you?
No, there's no problem on our end, and we understand the large responsibility you have. So we're at the ready, but we can also move at the pace that works best for you, or have to do that.
Okay. I feel fairly confident to say we are in support of this idea, and maybe a couple more days to talk about dollar amounts and any kind of guidance where we would suggest that you use the funds.
I would, I would ask you, knowing this came pretty late to you, to take a look at Stage Five specifically. That's a great page that hopefully walks you through some of those details.
Okay. Thank you. Mary, any last comments?
No, thank you all for your participation and your comments.
So any agreement that we would enter into would have to be approved by the Board? Is that correct, Vance, or not?
No, it could be approved by Mary, it could be approved by you. If the Board wishes to have it come before the Board, that we could do so, but no, it doesn't have to look like that.
So any direction from the Board as to whether or not you want this to come back before you or not would be helpful. It would be our goal to try and expedite making this happen, but if the Board wishes to see it again, we can certainly do that.
I'm okay with it, Joe. I think this is a, again, I look at this as kind of a new adventure in a way, stepping out into the universe, and I would trust that you and Mary and whoever else needs to be in that conversation can at least get us started on this.
Okay. Van?
I think her, I agree.
Great.
Commissioner Malone, you're in agreement?
Absolutely.
Okay, so Mary and I will move forward with Chris and Vance to make this happen at the dollar amount of $100,000, and we will not be bringing this back before the Board. We're just going to move forward and get it implemented.
My only advice would, unless there's a reason to parcel it out over several months to frontload it, and if we have, I've heard $90,000 or $100,000 to get most of that out as soon as we can, unless there's some reason for being on a payment plan.
Okay, thank you.
I guess, with respect to that, I find the front loading is our contribution to the fund, but I think that the foundation has the best expertise and experience to decide how quickly to go out and what we need is. So I'm not sure exactly what you meant by that comment of front loading.
I meant Benton County's contribution to the foundation. Well, appreciate the work that you do, Chris, and looking forward to continuing this partnership.
Thank you, everybody, and thanks for inviting us to be part of your team.
All right. Last on our agenda is review financials for the EOC. Is this Debbie, do we have?
Actually, I think it was going to be Dawn Dale, but I think Dawn had a schedule conflict starting at noon, so it's probably defaulting to Mary and Debbie.
Okay.
And I'm going to let Debbie take it from here.
Thanks, Mary.
Hi, y'all. I will tell you that I'm going to make this brief, because I have the same schedule conflict that Dawn does. It's a section chief meeting that starts at noon with all the section chiefs. So we submitted the report to you yesterday. I had submitted an update, and it was just a cleanup update, so there wasn't anything material that changed. You can see that the last operational period had about $124,000 of cost in it, and that is compared to the previous operational period of about $90,000. A good portion of that difference was a trough on the payroll that existed to date. So it wasn't anything that was a larger expense that happened, it was just a trough of the payroll. And then, again, the last thing that I would really emphasize in total is that while we see these costs nearing $1 million, I want everybody to be cautious of what that, what those costs look, are and look like. We've had a very, very broad definition of what it means to code your time to the COVID code. And so this is not a reflection of necessarily what this event has cost the county. It is a, is more of a reflection of where our efforts have been diverted to. So I just wanted to make that clear. And then, as Van had requested, we put in a couple of graphs on the second tab for you. Did anybody have a question?
I just wanted to apologize for some of the frustration caused yesterday by the reports from AOC for basically this data and some other data about what we're expecting our expenses to be going forward, the revenue foregone. Thank you for keeping this in such an organized fashion and making it so clear.
Well, absolutely no need to apologize, Van. We're trying to make sure on behalf of the taxpayers that we get as much information in order to access as many funds as we possibly can, so that's what we're here to do. So no apology necessary.
Any other questions on the financials? And Debbie, the idea is we will get this report updated every Thursday, is that correct?
So you'll actually get it from us every Wednesday, and then discussion on the weekly Thursday meeting, yes.
Great. Any other...
Thank you.
Any other questions? Anything else? I think we're done with the stats. Okay? We almost made it before noon. So thank you. Covered a lot of territory, and I think everybody's scrambling to make sense out of the situation we're in, and I think, I think we're doing a good job. So really appreciate everybody's efforts, and keep up the good work, and see most of you back here Tuesday morning.
Okay.
Annabelle, so good to see you.